Mr. Ackerman, would you please follow the roll? Crawford.
Here.
Goddard.
Here.
Graff. Hall.
Here.
Harris.
Here.
Hopkins. Joesting. Longfellow.
Here.
Mennel. Mylum.
Here.
Mingus.
Here.
Nelms. Phillips.
Here.
Prahan.
Glad to be here.
Rich Thompson.
Here.
Schmidt-Gahl.
Here.
Schneider.
Here.
Sen.
Here.
Stahl.
Here.
Stumpf.
Here.
Woodruff.
Here.
Chairman Graham.
Here.
We have a call. For what we come before you this evening, we thank you for all the lessons in your life, our lives. We thank you for the people who love and have the courage to get the chance to serve for it today. Please watch over protect us as we go through this evening and the next. We just do things to honor you and our work as well. Please be with us. Be with us as you see them, great. The allegiance is to the life of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Are there any communications from members of the public or county employees? Any communications from elected and appointed county officials? Mr. Crawford.
I'll make this brief. It's not a message you haven't heard from me before. Because of the nature of why we're here, I think it's important to say one more time, I'm for progress, I'm for criminal justice. But I'm also a fiscal conservative, and I've spent a lot of years being drilled in tightly to the Tasen County budget and our fiscal processes. And people sometimes get excited about new things. And sometimes if it's got a lot of money to it, it's got bells and whistles, they get real excited about it. And the one thing I always said for four years when I was auditor, and I've said it ever since, is you need to protect the revenue in the whole county, in all the funds, but particularly in the county general fund. County general fund, everybody up there will tell you, it is, it's stretched. Sometimes it's strapped. And it funds every, every one of these offices, not, not Ivy and Health and some of the exotic big ones, but all of your basic county officers, like sheriff and state's attorney and county clerk and circuit clerk, on and on. It funds them all, the county general fund, the little county general fund. And it, you know, works hard to get fees and fines and forfeitures. It's like a squirrel, you know, hunting nuts for the winter, trying to get revenue. And you don't want to whack that. If you whack that, you will regret it. Thank you. Uh, I turn in questions either now or later. Bye.
Thank you, Russ. Anybody else? Moving on to the purpose of the meeting, the big discussion on the new Justice Center annex. I want to start off by saying and explaining on this, because I've heard a lot of comments, we are getting new annex. That is not a question of what's happening or the different things that were voted on and was done by the previous board. And so now at this point, there are drawings getting very close to completion, that's getting ready to go out for bid, different things like that. The purpose of this meeting, though, is to bring some light discussion of the right largest project the county has ever had to the fore of the board that's going to have to live with it for good or for bad. The project was worked on and banded around for about three and a half years. And what we have now was given with the deadline of the last board meeting of the last city board. It wasn't a matter of what's right for the county, but for some it was just, let's get it done before the next board comes in, or I'm just tired of talking about this and let's vote, and let's vote. It was a twelve to seven vote, and all of the people who voted for this aren't here any longer to face whatever the consequences come from that decision. There was information and options that weren't presented before because it didn't fit the budget and didn't fit the narrative of what's best to get it passed. So the purpose tonight, we're going to bring all of that information out so that the board can have a say, so that this board can have a say on what's next in their mind and the best it will be for the county. Again, however it goes tonight, we are getting new annex and it's starting soon. The foundation and plans for both options we see allow PJ to get, it's hard to let it for bid in the next number of weeks. And this is the discussion of whether we build something, but a conversation more of how we feel comfortable with what spending on the project we will have. After seeing more of the story and understanding the options, more of the needs, we're going to be facing this next year. So I had stood up before this board, the previous board, a number of times and said, please don't do this. There's things you don't know. There's things that aren't working out. And so that's again what some of this is just going to come. We have John and Matt from PJ Hair here and Matt from Wold. They are the engineers and architects, and they're going to be able to answer questions and some of the different things going through this. But a quick rundown for some of this, the funds to be spent, what the county has was nineteen million dollars, just over a larva money to be spent to this building. The balance of it was going to come from reserves. Old board had priorities, and the new board has priorities as we came up with a strategic plan and the different things. It was repairs, salaries, software upgrades, and then a new building. Some of the stuff that was not discussed during that vote, uh, vote, was that if you were going to shell a third and fourth degree, there's no courtrooms, you have to shell a circuit court area as well. You cannot have six courtrooms and court functions in one building and a circuit court in another. But it was not presented because it fixed the price up more. So some of those things were left out and not made available. Some of the insurance, the maintenance, the personnel costs annually, those weren't shared. Some of the options as opposed to space for new corporates, some of the technology opportunities, some of the different things that are coming to work to be able to retrofit and hold buildings with new things that will help the new courts. Some of the other items that were going to be needing money, we have salaries, study that we're in the middle of, I think that's going to take a decent amount of estimates. All these we've got are making estimates because this was rushed, and so we're doing the best we can. An animal control building, repairs and overruns of some of the things that we've got. So as it stands, the original building as it is going is three stories with a shell out third floor. But it will also have a shell out circuit court area because we cannot build a building without that as well. That was not explained, but it's necessary. The new proposal is just an option without that third floor on it, but the structure is all still there for it. The footings are there, the steel is there, everything is there. So at some point, if the future board lines money or the different means, they can add on to it at any point. Then the option that we've got just to look at tonight, some of those different things that we've got to look at, as far as computer systems, there's deficiencies in the courts that we'd like to look at helping with them on different things. Those aren't options if we were spending some of the money that we do on this existing building. Not knowing what the state funding cuts to revenue are going to be, there's just a lot of uncertainty. And my point on this is, this board is the one that's going to have to answer constituents if something happens and we can't finish it or if we can't do it right. So as opposed to being handed something that we can't answer for because it wasn't our problem, we get this opportunity. So I'm going to open up the floor for discussion in just a few minutes, but I would like to have Link, Caleb, and anybody else from the court services come up and talk a little bit about it, just some of the things that you weren't showing or talked about before, so that we have some more information. So, Caleb?
Thank you, Brett. Thank you, everybody, for letting us put forth our point of view. A big part of my frustration to this point with this process is that there has been only one option presented. There have been no counter proposals, and there are very different points of view. I don't think anybody is, has any question in their mind about what I feel about this, but I'm going to say it anyway. Everybody's crystal ball does not see the future the same way here. We've, we, over the past several years, we've gotten almost two million dollars in technology grants. I've been told by the administrative office of the courts that I should be concentrating on technology, not on buildings. You know, we've heard, we've heard a lot of rumors, we've heard a lot of speculation about what would happen, and I just don't see it that way. I think, Caleb, you pass those out.
Yeah.
I'm passing out a letter that all of us from the judicial branch signed on to two years ago, where we asked for a criminal courts building and leaving the civil courts in the courthouse. We all signed on to that. And so I just wanted to remind everybody that that's what we as a judicial unit had asked for, and that's, that's everybody that's concerned with that. So, you know, somebody from the board asked the chairman, if we need this and you don't build this, you will own it. And I feel like the question that's more appropriate is, if you build this and you don't need it, who owns it then? I think, I think there are, there are some serious concerns about this. I, I, you know, the technology for us in the court system is just growing by leaps and bounds. We've got AI things. We've got different, different components of what, how this is all going to work. The technology, the communication between different, different areas of the courts, all of this stuff is looming in front of us, and it's all going to cost money. As Brett said, we, we have identified our priorities, and that's one of them. I, I think as we go forward, there, there's significant concern about what we're able to afford to do. And, and that's my concern right now, is that we're not going to be able to afford to do things that we need to do. If, if indeed we put this, we go with this high, high dollar amount and end up with this third floor of this building. That said, Caleb's got some, some information that he'd like to talk about in terms of timeframes and all that kind of thing. I'm, I'm going to kick him off by just saying, there was never any discussion of a new courthouse being built until we got the money from the federal government for COVID. And that, in my mind, just illustrates the difference between a want and a need. So with that, Caleb, I'm going to turn things over to you. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm probably going to go into a little bit more detail as far as the past few years as opposed to Chairman Graham. In a property committee meeting on February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, property chairman Longfellow stated he had received an initial ballpark estimate for a new justice center and stated it to be in the area of twenty-five million dollars, which did not include the demolition of the Arcade Building. Then on October twenty-five, two thousand twenty-three, at the county board's final budget meeting, there was a last minute transfer of nearly twelve million dollars out of the general fund reserves into the CIP fund, pushing the CIP fund balance to thirty-four million dollars. As by this time, a closer estimate was found as to what it would cost to build a new justice center annex. On July twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, during a property committee meeting, Wold Architects presented updated designs and cost options for the proposed justice center annex. Option F four, estimated at forty-four million dollars, emerged as the preferred choice due to its long-term flexibility, which included shelled out space for three additional courtrooms. Although no formal resolution was passed, the committee reached consensus to proceed with option F four. Two weeks later, on August seventh, two thousand twenty-four, at an in-place property committee meeting, the design options were revisited. Discussion focused on meeting core design criteria like secure connection to the justice center and future expansion. Wold confirmed that forty-four million dollar project projected cost did not include finishing the shelled out third floor. Board member Atkins asked what it would cost to finish the courtrooms, and PJ Hair stated it would cost an additional two to two and a half million dollars each. Adding three additional courtroom totals, six to nine million dollars more to complete the third floor, pushing the final cost over fifty million dollars. Despite concerns raised by member Schneider about these added costs and staying true to the original budget amount, the committee approved the motion to move forward with the schematic design with member Schneider voting no. After the in-place property committee meeting that evening, the board approved what was called an all-in maximum price of forty-four million dollars, ten million dollars over the budgeted amount that was agreed upon nine months earlier. Furthermore, the all-in number does not include finishing the shelled third floor. At the time, only five board members voted against shelling out the third floor. Member Sam Goddard, member Harris, member Hopkins, member Schmidt-Gahl, and member Schneider. In addition, and looking ahead, the direction of the AOIC is clear. They're embracing the use of digital filing, remote hearings, virtual access, technology-integrated courtrooms, and AI. In two thousand sixteen, the Illinois Supreme Court initiated a mandatory e-filing system for civil cases across all courts in the state. This transition to electronic filing streamlines the submission process, reduces reliance on paper documents, and increases public access to court records. In December twenty-four, or two thousand twenty-four, the Illinois Supreme Court released a policy governing the ethical use of AI in judicial proceedings. Effective January one of this year, two thousand twenty-five, the policy permits judges, attorneys, and court staff to utilize AI tools, provided their use complies with legal and ethical standards. In response to these and other technological advancements among counties, the Illinois Supreme Court established the Technology Modernization Grant Program. The tech grant was launched in two thousand twenty-two and immediately awarded thirteen and a half million dollars to ninety-eight counties, funding upgrades such as electronic filing systems, digital case management tools, and virtual hearing capabilities. Over the past four years, Tassell County has been a, has been a beneficiary of nearly two and a half million of these dollars awarded through the technology grants from the AOIC. The Justice Center annex project has, has evolved significantly from its initial scope. What began as a twenty-five million dollar idea has grown to now an estimated forty-four million dollars with additional costs for the finishing of the third floor. Thank you for your time and consideration.
I guess what, I would just like to make sure that everybody now has an idea and to talk about is, there are some other options for this. We are going to have an estimated seven million dollars in additional expenses this year and probably next year between our salaries, between our annual control, between our software, and the different things that we've got going. So whatever number that we pick here, there's going to be another seven million dollars in there somewhere. So we are building a resourced building right now. And again, the only thing that I'm looking for is a point during this, if there is a consensus to take it back to a two-story, we don't change any of the foundation, we don't change the structure, we don't change the different things out of the thinking of that part. I'll open it up to see if anybody would like to ask questions. Mindy and Mike are here with numbers, different kinds of things to help with that. It's just that kind of discussion. And again, I don't expect this to take too long because we're not really asking whether we're building it. It's just which one. Mr. Crawford?
Well, based on what I've heard so far, I already have a question. And not to pick on my friend Link, but I'll ask him a question since he spoke. One of the things he said sort of puzzles me unless I use my imagination, but I don't like to base things on my imagination. So here's my question, Link. And I know this is your perspective. There may be people in there that have a different one. That's okay. I'm asking you. If there was pretty widespread agreement or consensus of the leaders in the criminal justice system in Tassell County, and we know who they are, for a build on the criminal side, but not yet on the civil side, how the hell do we get here? Where'd all this civil stuff come from? Did, did people say, well, I don't care what the state's attorney and the sheriff and the courts, you get the idea, are saying, we're going to shove the criminal side down your throat, too? How did we get here with this sort of expanded program? Thanks.
Do you want me to come back up there, or can I just stand up? I don't have any problem with that. Russ, that's a good question. The reason I handed this letter out is because that is, that is what we all agreed to. You know, as, as this went on, I, I think, frankly, I think there was submission creep. And I think, I think as this moved forward, it just got bigger and bigger and bigger. But I, I stayed with what I signed up with. And, and that, Stu Umplez has talked for a long time about a criminal annex and doing this. But there was never any talk of a civil component to this at all until we got that federal money that some people referred to as free money. So I guess, I don't know that I necessarily answered your question. I don't, I don't probably feel comfortable saying where I think that came from, but I, I think there was just some, just more and more expansion of the idea, and it just kind of got bigger and bigger, and this grew out of control.
Well, if I, could I follow up, Mr. Chairman? I totally understand the motivation for the contractor and the planners and the engineers and the architects. I mean, they'd be almost remiss if they didn't do that, you know, to build the most robust jewel
They, they, I'm just, I'm going to quick jump in. They didn't.
No, I'm not saying.
This was none of their stuff.
I, I didn't say it was. I said I could understand it if it was. Because that's part of what they do. They'll, they do a good job with whatever the size is, but I didn't want it. But my point is this, if you're a county board member, you don't have that natural inclination, at least I hope. If, if, if part of your inclination is to get the best, maybe on the theory that, well, we won't have to do it later, so maybe we can save money in the out years. You know, I can start to buy that. But the size of the commitment for today, based on our historic revenue and carryover, I can't understand that. It, it, it defies fiscal logic to me. And it would certainly defy fiscal logic to me if I were not a county board member, if I were simply a Tassell County taxpayer and citizen who's looking around the world today anyway, going, you know, what the hell's going on, even though we've had three days of good market, we had a crap load of bad before that, and everything's up for grabs, and this is not a time when they want us to build a Cadillac. So, yeah, I just, I'll cut to the chase a little bit, Mr. Chairman. I would definitely, I, I'm not for building nothing, but I definitely would scale back to the two-story. Thank you.
I have some questions on the letter that Link handed out. On the second page, the technology requirement, is there, can we meet the technology needs for the civil courts and the old courthouse? And I'm, start off with, I'm against the third floor. I have been on it. It's space that's set idle, and people misuse it, and it won't end up for the purpose it was built for. Now, back to my original question. Link, is there a problem with the technology and the, for the civil courts and the old courthouse?
No, we're working on that. We, as you know, we, we've expanded a lot of the technology needs. We've got the additional Wi-Fi in there. When, when the county servers were hacked and we went down, our office was able to function and the courts were able to function because we were on a separate system. That's, that's the kind of thing we need to continue. That's, that's the kind of thing we need to go forward with. I would, I would also ask Max and Caleb to weigh in on this. When we were in Washington earlier, last month, we went out to the lab that the National Council of State Courts has put together out there, showing the different ways. It showed, there were a lot of examples of what you do with a new courthouse, but there were also examples of what you can do in an existing courthouse to make it, make it fully function. Does that answer your question, Mike?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Your honor?
Yeah, so my, I agree with Link that we have improved the technology with art. It's better. In a new building, it's going to be easier because the building is set up for technology, but it is better, and it's working better than it was before, because before it was not at all, and everything is digital. So I agree a hundred percent with what they're saying at the technology department. Can I just say one thing, Brett? Because Wes was talking about something, so I just, I just a little bit in terms of, I don't know how all the five plans came up through different courthouses or whatever it was. So our point of view from the court's standpoint is, our biggest issue is safety. Okay, so you're going to have half and half in efficiency. Better if everything works together, and it will be a great world. We can do that. So rather than looking at doing another building down the road, if it's more effective for you guys to decide what you're doing, that is the rationale. We did not ask, you know, Russ, so you know, too, at least for me, if it is that way, my comment was less bells and whistles, more function and serving the public in the best way we can. I mean, and I think Brett was coming to that point with the architects. That was our goal with it. It wasn't something like, we took this and now we're going to do that. Someone presented all of these plans, so when we look at it from a financial standpoint, rather than because there's tons of problems, we talked about it before, going up, you have to build a building later. Eventually, of course, we want to have for safety and have everyone in the same building. That would make the most sense. And there's other decisions on to do the building or not. Like Brett said, we've already passed that Rubicon, and we got the building going up anyway. But that's kind of, at least from the court's perspective, I can't speak to everyone else, but when we have those perspectives, that's why we would be. but when we have those perspectives, that's why we would be in support, would want that for everyone. I hope that makes sense? And I hope that answered Mike's question that, yeah, we can function with what we're doing and we're trying to improve. I think that's fair.
No, I got a couple more court questions. Has the final design been completed? Are they all real close?
That depends on tonight, I think, but ninety percent.
That's fair.
We can meet this summer schedule of building?
Sorry.
We can meet the building's schedule this summer? Okay, then my last comment, this is a comment. In our five-year CIP plan, we've had, I think we have over fifty projects, and we are already using some of that money for those fifty projects, so we're gonna have to drop some of them off the bottom here. Now, if we go with the fifty-three million option, it's gonna drop more off, it's gonna put the animal control center in jeopardy, and that's a critical item that we need to build this year. So I'm not supporting the third story.
Yes, thank you. Just a question. Where, what if any of the property committee process? I can't very, it's a confusion of my life. I said, what if any, what's the role of the property committee in this new process?
Well, if it would decide to move down to a two-story, then it would come to the property committee in a couple weeks, where they would talk about the different options, the different things, and then it would move on to full board at that point, because right now it is a three-story building, no question about that. And so it would just move to a two-story or for less money, they would work on those numbers to get those secured, and then it would continue on the process. Nancy's in front, sorry, Nancy.
Well, I was one of those who voted for the project at the time with the third story included, because it sounds pretty practical. We've lived through a lot of things between then and now, seeing a little bit, a better picture of what's going on in our world, which is the county's world. But I also am thinking about the practical side of that third empty floor, whether it be rooms, whether it just be a big room. And I, I would be so excited, though there was empty space somewhere where my offices could go, if I had offices in the McKenzie Building or some other building, and I, I know I wouldn't be the only one who would feel that way. And I could see, as would happen in my house if I had a closet, it wouldn't be long, those closets would be full, but not necessarily for the purpose that they were originally intended. So at this point, as a, as a probably more practical side than anything, and I'm not even talking money here, which I should be more, I think that we would be wasting that space for a long time, trying to decide who gets the next rooms. And I don't think that that's gonna be, that's not a big issue, but I think at this point we have a plan for where people are going to be, and with the, the issues that we have facing us at this time, including some new ones that I hadn't heard much about until tonight, or what I've heard a little about, but not enough to make a decision. I think we're wrong to go ahead and make that third floor, as much as I voted for it at one time, so I'm gonna be honest on that one. Thank you.
It's been difficult to talk about this subject, I know a lot of people spend a lot of time, I know a lot of people paid a lot for their votes too, those who seemed to vote for, seemed to got taken out of leadership roles, and those who voted for seemed to get leadership roles. So I hate to think what might, if they say the wrong thing, what might happen here. People voted for this thing because it was the cheapest way to do it. Everybody thinks that we're looking at spending all this bazillion dollars, if you're looking at future space, we voted, this was the cheapest way. Now, if you look at this here, fifty-three to forty-one, the forty-one does not include the future expansion, which would probably, even if you just made it where you could build up, the numbers would dwarf the fifty-three by quite a lot. So, I mean, I don't really care anymore, but it was the fifty-three, the other was the cheapest way to, to accomplish our goal.
Yeah, I, I supported the third floor before, I still do. I think it's short-sighted to take that off. I, I mean, I've heard some of the arguments about, well, get used for something else. Well, I, that's to me, doesn't the board get the decision on who? I mean, so I don't, I don't really buy into that. There's several things, I know a lot of us weren't here when this building was built, but it got scaled back and because, for good reasons. I'm not, I'm not questioning the decisions, there was a, it came in higher than what was expected and so, and it, and we had to pass a referendum, or not we, but, and so, that, that weighed into it. But, you know, and then I hear about the unknowns. The unknowns are no different than they were twenty years ago. There were unknowns then, there will always be unknowns, but when we go and build the rest of it, it's gonna cost way more than what, what we're talking here. Now, I understand that the clerk, uh, Serp, the clerk's office wasn't fared in to that forty-four million, the way I understood, I heard, I don't know if it's true, and Link, if it's not true, that Link said, I don't wanna go on that building. Well, you know, so I, I think for that reason it wasn't included, but I, I just think it's short-sighted. I heard all about how we shouldn't went up higher with this, you know, and, you know, it was a mistake, all this, and, and we got, we got a plan here, it's, I think it's a good plan, we got room to adjust as we go. I think the courts prefer this, we all consider what they think. And I just, I think if we scale it back, wind up probably building another building next to it, and it'll cost way more money than what would if we just go ahead with this, we'll have room to expand, if we need to adjust a little bit, we can. Maybe we'll find out, we don't know, we need six courtrooms, maybe we can get by with five and there's room for the Serp clerk's office in there then. I, I mean, we don't know. The other thing is, it's, it's, it's just hard to go back. We've experienced that with this building. The funds are there, I hear all this about all the capital improvements, well, we had that, we had a lot of that budgeted in already. I mean, so it's, it's not gonna cost all that, we had a budget of a, a five-year plan or whatever for capital improvements. We haven't kept up with it, we're way behind, it's hard to get things done, I understand that, I don't, I don't fault anybody for that, but it's gonna take time to get all that, you know, there's a whole list, but we only get a few things done here, and it's not all gonna happen at once. We have more funds sitting there than we've ever had, there's no board that I know of for a long time that had the funds available we have now. And we're not a bank, we shouldn't be sitting on money, and, and I just feel like we have more than we maybe should have, so just to scale it back, because we're maybe worried about the future. I mean, it's a good, I understand being concerned, but we also gotta figure out what might happen if we scale back and then five years, say, well, we gotta, you know, we gotta do something here, and, and we end up spending more money than ever.
All the good things I know I'd like to say then would be, twenty years ago, they scaled this back and the jail sits at half capacity now. So the guidelines don't always work for what's gonna be coming forward, so we don't need a bigger building, cutting back was the right thing to do for us. The other one, actually I don't remember at the moment, so I'll address the other later when I do. Max?
I responded, Greg, I did say that, and if you look at that letter, if the civil courts remain in the courthouse, I would not move. But if you move all the courts to the new building, then I have to move. So just, by way of clarification, that is what I said, but it was in reporting to the original request that we move the civil, or that we leave the civil where it is and we move the criminal process. Does that make sense?
I understand. I remember my department was, the reason that we have that private money, that we are starting, is because in twenty seventeen and eighteen, when we thought we were gonna have to do layoffs and different things happened, we made cuts and then we never came back to fix those cuts that we had made when we did start to have money. So the money shouldn't be there, because it should've been spent over the last seven, eight years, and it wasn't. So you're double spending it, you're spending it on things that we have to go back and fix, and now you're spending on the new buildings as well. Max, I think that was.
So what did we cut that we didn't back in twenty seventeen, eighteen?
Salaries, CIP.
We did cut salaries.
We didn't give the raises to keep up with. In twenty fourteen, Mr. Harris spent forever trying to figure out how to bring salaries up to a P twenty-five, and we immediately went away and went even further to starting in that. You were here at that point, but Tim Newhouse was here so much fast, and you worked through a whole list of things that were going to be cut and not spent on. Even so, all of those.
Sure. I don't wanna go into it, but even the budget parameter sheet, go back and look at the budget parameter sheet that the finance committee and the budget subcommittee used to guide Any county officers or department heads that were around them will remind you that they did not, that they scaled back, they did not get what they wanted to get, because the finance department or the auditor, whoever was running it at the time, said, we don't have that kind of money. So we were all worried, we were all careful and prudent, by the way, like we've always been since eighteen twenty-seven. It's one of the reasons we got such a low tax rate in the state of Illinois. We have not been drunken spenders.
All right, the other thing, I'll add quick, is in eighteen, Dave Zerlman went to the public to try to increase taxes so we wouldn't have to cut jobs. We looked at that and we hit that with that, so that's part of the reasons that we maybe cut, I mean, it was at that point. Max?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sometimes with these complex problems that we have at the county, I like to try to boil them down to a very basic example, and I, most of you know I deal in real estate every single day, and so I was kinda thinking about this over the weekend, and really, this boils down to a phrase you hear often when you're looking to purchase a house and being house poor, right, being house poor, meaning you spend way too much on your house, and while you can afford it, and yeah, you've got some left over in the bank and you can afford the utilities and the monthly payment, you're not doing a heck of a lot else. And in my experience, when I come to a listing and someone has been house poor, it's incredibly obvious. It's obvious because windows don't open for leak. It's obvious because there's mold in the basement or they've neglected to make some major roof repair. It's obvious because they don't have, their HVAC is not up to date, and their AC doesn't cool away, they wish it would in the summertime. And some of those things are happening right here in Tassell County. We have windows in the courthouse, in the current courthouse, that currently leak in or rotting out floors. We have mold and have a terrible situation at the animal control building, which needs desperate repair and replacement, quite frankly. We have so much technology to pay for, fund, maintain, technology you probably can't even think of yet. I don't think anybody here wants to be house poor. And if we build this three-story building based on these numbers that are here, we are going to be house poor. There will not be other projects done, we will have a very difficult time raising wages for people who work hard every single day in this county to make it a great place to work and a great place to do law and order, a great place to do business. It will be a very, very challenging time, we will have no other choice than to either cut services or raise taxes, do things that Republicans and people who are here don't want to do. No one here wants to do any of those things. And quite frankly, I wasn't even for the forty-four million dollar building, I wasn't for the thirty-seven million dollar building, I was the only person who wanted to put this building in budget. This forty-one million dollar building is gonna be built. And I'm not really that pumped about it, because I, it, it's still a budget. But this board in this day and this time has a unique opportunity to rein the dangerously expensive project in. We could rein this in and we can continue to support and fund the rest of the challenges we have in this county. Everyone has taken tours around here, everyone knows what they are, and while I think we can still build a pretty nice building for forty-one million dollars, I think it needs to end there. Let's not make this county house poor. Thank you.
I guess for the back and forth, a lot of different things. I can, I'm not trying to bring more contention to it, but as I had said during the last year, you guys can remember the whole story, so what some other options are. No matter what comes from it, this is going to be the win. Those gentlemen back there are building and designing a very nice building for this county, and we aren't gonna end up with a good place, no matter what we get. And so I'm not, I don't want anybody to think that we're losing something like that. They are doing a fantastic job, we are on target, we are going to be going. What I really wanted was just to make sure that everybody who's sitting here right now has a choice and be able to know that we are going to own this project, going for it. And so it doesn't matter who you see in six months, if something happens and it goes great and they're saying, well done, and if it goes bad, then what are you thinking? You have it, you put it right now.
I'd like to turn it just a second on something that was said earlier today, and I'm a little offended, I guess is the right word, the line that was said that twelve, the vote was twelve to seven on the third floor. Those votes are gonna like that, I mean, however you vote, it's gonna be a certain way too. So keep in mind, that means nothing, I'm sorry, it means something because I voted one way and somebody else voted the other. The point is, some of those people who got the vote are no longer here, or they may have left because they disagreed with the way they felt win. But I, I just think that whole argument should be put aside and use your vote the way you want to use it, and don't be thinking about, well, that's gone four years from now and my vote's not gonna come the same, because it's a, so that's, that's my only comment. I'm a little offended by that, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't get it quite that way, but I was trying to, to answer any more than anything, was that some of those people aren't here to own this, what's going forward? So I'm sorry.
It's a question, what are the odds, if we build a fifty-plus million building, that the animal control building will be delayed or is canceled, that project?
I don't know, that's all on, on the board.
Yeah, I'd like to ask some questions from B.J. here. It seems like some of the things I'm hearing today, the numbers are completely different than what even that, what we'd agree upon, so I was wondering, first question I have is verifying back when we were working through the F three and F four, that we were at thirty-seven million and forty-four million, and that forty-four million, that was guaranteed maximum price, and maybe even less than that for the shelled-out third floor, is that correct? And on the shelled-out third floor, did we not have the understanding that we could put in three courtrooms at a smaller size, and also have room for the circuit clerk if needed in the jury room? uh, in the jury room, if possible, so we could fulfill all six courthouses in there or courtrooms in there? Is, is there not enough room on the third floor to do that?
That'd have to be a question for Matt. So, uh, like we talked about the third floor, um, we talked about shell space for three courtrooms and the complimentary support spaces that go along with that. Uh, we also talked about additional capacity for, uh, the circuit clerk's, uh, jury commission operations. Um, but it was never talked about putting the circuit clerk's office proper, um, on the, on the third floor.
But wasn't it talked about, the only time we would need all that jury space was when we had to call honor member jury in?
Absolutely, that's correct.
That's true. So some of that space could be used to circuit clerk, was that not discussed? I guess my point is, uh... Well, my point is that, th- there is space on the third floor to fulfill a six-room, or a six-room courthouse and also building in the shield, a fourth proposal for the circuit clerk. Uh, of course, that could be, uh, followed up later. I'd like to hear the number, so we're talking about taking the third floor off and taking the shell off. I'd like to hear the number and savings to go back to the F-three plan, basically. Do we have a dollar amount, about how much we're gonna save to, on a forty-four million dollar project by taking the shell off the third floor? So I was wondering from B.J. here.
It could be anywhere from three to three and a half million if we let the rest of the structure and the infrastructure to build in the future. If we were to reuse that, maybe, uh, around five million, if we took all of that stuff out. Those are rough numbers.
And then, what did we have for a number? Let's say we do go ahead and, uh, do the shell third floor and we do build to, this number that, to fulfill the third floor is jumping up around seven million dollars to do three courtrooms and move a little space around for the circuit clerk. Uh, what would you say the number would be to build those three courtrooms off the top of your head, five years from now or whatever? Give us an opinion about how much more it's gonna cost to fulfill the forty-four million dollars to finish it up to make it final?
Maybe to, to fit them out, probably another twenty, twenty-five percent.
How much is that? Three million? Five million? Ten million to finish out three courtrooms?
Twenty percent.
So one, at one time we talked about courtroom, did one point two million per courtroom?
Yeah, we're, we're saying right now, probably with all the infrastructure and all the technology in there, somewhere between, maybe close to two million.
To finish off the three courtroom? Each courtroom?
Depending on the size, if they're, if they're similar to what we have.
So six, seven million? Okay. So total and all in would be forty-four million with the shell, about six-ish million more? So fifty million dollars, roughly? And to get it all done now? I think that's why we had the direction we went back when we did that. It wasn't really, it was just fiscally responsible, go from F-three to F-four, because the F-three was at thirty-seven million. And we went and went to F-four. At that time, with the old board, and obviously we have a new direction here with the new board, and this is a good idea to have, everybody have a new idea of what the old board went through. But what the old board went through is almost three years, uh, planning and design and millions meetings. Now, I think that's exaggeration. Let's say fifty millions to get to where we are, which are been approved by the previous board. That doesn't seem to matter right now. But I understand, uh, if everybody wants to go backward, that would be fine, uh... I just, uh, don't understand it fiscally. Would, I mean, we talk about being conservative Republicans, but I think if we don't do the shell thing, obviously, uh, it's gonna cost us another twenty more million later, maybe thirty. So, if y'all want a three courtroom criminal court courthouse and never expect to build anything newer, anything later, then that's fine, if that's what everybody wants. But if you expect to someday having a six courtroom courthouse full facility, replace the old one someday, it just isn't fiscally possible to do it this way, so... I think that's all the questions I have.
Yeah, I would like to respond to something, uh, Greg, I'm looking at the floor plan for option F-four for the third floor. There are three courtrooms, there's shell court support in the back and that's for those, for those courtrooms. There's a small room for the jury expansion, there's no room for the circuit clerk's office on, on this, on this, uh, length from F-four, from...
I don't disagree with you on that because we really never did do the planning of the third floor. I was expecting, but there is enough square footed space of, to do them. And most people's opinion, I think.
I'm not trying to drag this out, kind of, so really at this point, if anybody has any more questions or different things, then that'd be great, but at least...
Just a quick question from Micra Minnie. Um, can you just refresh my memory on, um, where we're going? Like, I know legally we keep, what, it's thirty-three percent in reserves? And what do we have now and what are we gonna break it down to? I know that was topic of discussion previously. Yeah, that's right. And I'll tell you, I just, what I calculated, Mike can add to it, um, that currently our fund balance in general fund is sixteen point three-six million dollars, which is approximately forty percent fund balance. Um, of our, I had used this for year twenty-five, expected expenditures, not, not including interest. With that, what's going to happen?
Yes, for the general fund, the board's financial policy says thirty-three percent is the minimum. Historically, it has ranged in the fifty to seventy percent of the twelve, the last couple of years. The, with, based on the FY twenty-four ending audit balances that we have, if all the revenues or expenses go exactly as budgeted, then we would end the year with forty-eight percent, uh, once you factor in using the contingency. If we weren't to use the contingency, we would put this at fifty-three percent at the end of this year twenty-five. That's our mess, uh, just based on what is budgeted and not what'll actually come necessarily.
Thank you, I just wanted to, um... I just wanted to make a couple comments. Um, one, back, um, kinda back to Russ, not, uh, calling you out, but there are constituents that are in favor of going with, as I have talked of, going with the current three-story because it does make a lot of financial sense. So not everybody is on the negative, just wanna bring that to everybody's point. They do think there's a lot of, um, people that do sit on this board that, um, look to the future in all that they do, whether they're a farmer or a business owner or different things that they do that, um, they're looking to buy ground, buy new machinery, make a better business for themselves, buy a bigger building, move down the block. Um, so I do think that everybody probably in this room, progress is, um, is not a bad thing. Um, everybody probably lives in a bigger home than they grew up in. I don't disagree with being house poor, but I do disagree that, I don't think the third story is gonna make us house poor. Um, I do think the third story is, um, is the financial way to go because I don't think there's a board that's gonna build another building next to it.
This is from Micra Minnie. What, what is the cap, where is the capital funds down right now?
Referring to the CIP fund that we have, that we're doing all of our capital expenditures out of, that fund's floating in with that. Okay, so our fund balance currently is fifty-three point five million dollars. And, um, at the end of fiscal year twenty-four, it is forty-seven point one million.
And that includes, um, funds for this project?
Yes, it does, along with all the other projects that will be paid for out of that fund.
So if we're looking at cost, how much is it gonna cost to keep the old courthouse functioning? That does, if, if we choose this one, that means it's gotta be there. And we've kind of been delaying, you know, million dollar window price or air, proper air, air conditioner movement, stairs that are, are bad and stuff like that, so that's not, it's not free to keep the old courthouse, so... So, uh, uh, I guess, I'm just saying that is, is, is a cost to, uh, keep it at all. Is there any kind of, what's the capital plan for the next five years?
Uh, in the fiscal year twenty-five budget, we do have a plan for the next five years for courthouse facility improvements of five point nine million dollars.
Those will be done either way. We can throw out these options.
Yeah, I assume I'm right about this, but if I'm wrong, somebody needs to tell me now. We, we have a, unless we tear the courthouse down, which we have a reminded body, uh, we have an obligation to do all the kinds of, of prudence and risk mitigation, uh, that we do now. Uh, even if we repurpose it for something less intensive, we still have to provide security and safety and if, if a stair has a problem or more than one stair, have to fix those, I mean, all the kinds of things. Barring there is no building there anymore, we still are responsible for. I do have one question. Um, what do you, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, Greg, but, uh, what do you envision is the process if some board members want to express that they agree with you to, uh, go with the two-story option? How or when do you want to do that? Because I noticed there's not a vote on this agenda.
Correct.
So, can you share that with me?
Yep, in about two minutes. Okay, start looking this direction. And we are currently building a three-story building, so if you wanna keep it, just kind of nod your head up and down, and if you'd like to look a different direction or this way, then if you like to not do a three-story, actually, if you had known there's a consensus, maybe let's go for a, either way.
Oh, yeah, you're, are you doing a, a body line with vote?
I'm just, that's it, I'm just kinda looking for consensus, what everybody's thinking. It's not a vote, it's just, uh, what is everybody thinking because, Max, anyway.
Kevin, he's not really taking a vote, he's, he's, he's testing the room.
I would just like to ask you a couple questions, um, first of all, to Greg. Um, and again, obviously, I'm an important member, so I would like a little history as far as, um, just going back to the initial... Greg, you talked about, um, a lot of physical space on that third floor, um, and asked about a lot of numbers. But if you recall, Ken was talking about a lot of infiling for the, um, civil pieces that goes on now, which, um, is in regards to a lot of, you know, the, um, technology that will have to be, um, financially put into, um, the courts and that. So, I guess was that taken into account when we were having all those discussions with the plans, um, when we were coming up with those original numbers? Because again, we were talking, when we were talking to the architect and, um, back here with B.J. here and, um, about numbers for the future and right now and everything, so I'm just, I'm asking a question.
I think the new building will have all the, uh, capabilities of technical, or the technology that it will ever need at this point in time, it's already factored in that price of forty-four million or less. So there's not, they'll only have the latest, greatest technology and the server room will be in that new building and it'll be as current as it possibly can be for cable issues, no matter what department.
But those will all be additional expenditures that we're not bringing in in the budget?
No, it's already factored in that building as far as the technology in that building.
In this plan that we're looking at right here?
Yeah, the third, the F-four plan that you weren't familiar with, the forty-four million dollars or less, yes.
Okay.
That's my, that's my opinion, you know?
Okay, thank you. And then, Timmy, my next question is to you. So you talked about, um, constituents that are in favor of the, um, third floor on the new, um, Justice Center annex. So, can I just ask a little bit more detail about why they are favorite? Because it will raise their taxes, we don't have to find it.
I don't think it will raise their taxes. We've never once, in this room, and prior ones, we've never once talked about raising their taxes. They talked about interstate impact progress, any business that wants to grow. And I think Tassell County is a business, I'm not saying that it's, it's apples to apples, but a big business that wants to grow has to look to progress. Technology is progress, we've heard it from, we've heard it from the courts. Putting everybody, um, in one building makes, in most sense. So, I, I do disagree with, I, I've never, if somebody correct me, I've never once heard that we were raising taxes.
All right, it's already funded, the new building's already funded.
And, and you think that just with reworking, uh, two-floor annex and considering all the extra costs for updates and like Max was talking, you're simply talking about a three-floor, um, annex and just the physical space. You're not considering all the extras that go into a two-floor building and there's always additional cost. Max brought up that he's in real estate, he knows when they have, and no disrespect to the architect and the builder, but whenever you have updates, there's always more, always more with any kind of a bill. So, that's, that's my final question. I disagree, there is no choice here. It's the two-floor, I know.
Um, I just wanna point out that we raise taxes every single year here. Um, I specifically tried in the last two cycles to make sure we didn't raise taxes. We do not raise taxes because we are building a building, we raise taxes because we feel it is in the count. Some folks think it is in the best county's interest to do so. I might would be in the minority opinion on that.
I just got a question, so I'm clear. So, if we decide to do the two-story option, we're, we're saving three million dollars, is that right?
Four point five.
Forty-four to forty-one?
Be forty-five point five, because we're, we're going to do the, the circuit clerk's shell area that wasn't in there previously. So that's added to it. Because he has, because if you're going to have at some point six courtrooms, he has to have it. Whoever the circuit clerk is, has to have the room there to have all of their clerks, all of their offices all the way to the front of that. He's the money and remaining of the old courthouse and have six courtrooms as the goal.
Okay, so, okay, I'll, um, accept your argument, I don't agree because...
A Y C would shut us down.
Oh, I, I, so four point five and, and it's gonna cost twenty million to do one, to, to finish it, basically, so...
And, and I understand what you're saying. And the reason to that is because we're leaking the structure for the fourth floor, the third floor. If we were to take it out, it would be more of a, so that's, that's why I'm suggesting, and I understand what you're saying, so, okay?
Yes, you're suggesting to take a straw poll as far as the consensus? What, that kind of bothered me cause it took us three years to come up with a current polls. And within an hour, we're expected to come up with a consensus of...
a consensus of straw poll, makes sense to me that to go back to committee, put through the process, and then come back to the board.
Well, that, that's not the way we're gonna go, because my next question was John, whether he is planning on letting us out to bid.
Uh, first three bid packages be sometime midnight.
So, it's, if it would, if it would go back, if it would go back properly this month to talk a lot of it, either the, about one of these two options, because it is starting in May, I mean, we're, we're about.
Even then, Russia decision, will that be ten seconds?
We are, and that was because it's decided in November and it starts in May, so again, I'm just trying to, everybody at least for the last day, and to tell.
But what three bid packages, does it really affect? Do you want three bid packages, is it, are the three bid packages that are being let affecting either option?
It will, um, it's the excavation, the foundation, and the relocation of site utilities, so if you have to add the circuit clerk, um, that will change some of the foundation. If we eliminate the third floor and we want to say that that third floor won't be built in the future, and we reduce, uh, the foundation size, that will have an impact on it, so we still, lots of decisions made, we still have design time, the old is gonna have to complete to give us enough information to be able to push bids out for those packages.
So, trying not to do that, because I'm trying to honor the previous board's bid. I, uh, over, over last year, as I was able to spend some time getting to, uh, kind of try to catch, play catch-up on, uh, a lot of the things that the previous board had done, um, as well as kind of try to stay, uh, stay out of the mix a little bit and not get in too much trouble, um. Because I was, didn't want to, uh, put too much opinion out there, I guess, but at the same time, I guess we're, I'm also at a point now where, um, going to be over the next four years and possibly in the future, I guess, but at least the next four years I'll be here and, um, as a citizen either way. A couple of things, I guess, that I looked at, and I think I, at one point, when we talked about, um, the F four option, I think I even said, and so I appreciate that we have a full number up there on the left-hand side, and I, I said, whether I guess I would have voted for it, but, um, if the board would choose to go with an option where we actually finished the building, including the fourth floor, or third floor, include the fourth and the basement, that, you know, I would understand it, I would be behind it, I am for progress, and, and I would understand that decision. Now, can we write a check for it and do all the other things that we want to do? No, you know, fifty-three million, I think, it was maybe twelve million that we still got, and other capital expenditures that we talked about last year, maybe a little high on that number, but I think it was around twelve maybe, but, you know, my, my point then was, hey, you take a loan. The county's got money, right, we've got places we could take loans against, buildings, lands, wherever it would be, and there, there's options that would allow us to do that without having to go and ask the citizens of the county, if, if we really feel that that's the way to go, then let's do it. Finish it out, go take a loan for it, but I don't think, and, and, and I don't want to speak for anybody, but I don't think that that vote would go through e- even last year, as people were voting for it, but I think that that's what we're spending, is my point. We're spending the money, whether we want to write the check today to finish it out, and there are a lot of uncertainties that have changed since this vote initially happened, to Nancy's point. We don't know, the health departments had one thing pulled, will we have others, um, for funding that don't come through from federal or from state because of things that they may lose, and that's not come up tonight, but that's, that's a real possibility as well, so. You know, we may be in a different position by the end of the year financially than we even are now, and the things that we just don't know. So I think that we need to take all of those things into effect in twenty eighteen, it, it was a very, very small increase of people's taxes, and, and they did vote it down, this county did, so. To me, I think that if they were looking at these numbers, I'm sure there's quite a few that would be for it, but I think as an overall, I think our county would go one direction based on that vote, um, and other things, I guess, other conversations, but. So I think, um, we've gotten a decision tonight, looking at, and over the next month, respecting all the work that the old, uh, last board has done, but looking forward to the uncertainty that, and the things that have changed since then. And so I, I think that looking at the two-story option today, though, maybe by this long term, if we want to build more, um, probably the best way to go. So, like I said, I'm just gonna kind of look around with your idea of what we're thinking, but, you know, another thing is that hasn't really been brought up, um, this is frustrating for Mr. Mitchell, John, everybody as well, but, and it's, it, it's my fault on that as far as bringing it out and wanting to make sure that everybody here knows what they are going to own for the next number of years. So, you know, it's one of those things that, um, they've been spending time and energy on these things, and I greatly appreciate it. When we get through this tonight, or in a couple of weeks, whatever this is, we're all gonna be behind it, and we're gonna go with something good for that one town.
It has to go to property, right, next week, then it'll go to full board, either option. But the full, if the property says, property committee says two floors or three floors, the board still has the right to change property committee's decision.
If, if it goes, the only way it will go to property and on is if there's enough people here that say we'd like to reconsider it as a two-story building. If it's not, then it will continue on just like it is, there's no property, there's no full board, because it's already a three-story building.
So you go, if everybody agrees tonight, then you go straight to full board?
No, if, if we, if everybody agrees tonight, then it will just continue as it is, and it will let it all out. If there's a consensus of no, we'd like to look at something different, then it will go to property in a couple of weeks. Because it has it right now, it could be a three-story building, per se, the board obviously did in May, things are going, so.
Well, you're gonna add a one point five in for the, for the, uh, circuit clerk's.
When they give us the alternates and they're gonna go ahead and do it all.
Don't you think that's rushing these new board members that we're waiting on, uh, because they're new, and we've, we've one hour here?
I do, I really tried to stress that in November, that we could wait for this, but there was a bunch of people that kind of kept pushing to, or to get it done.
But to be clear, we've already voted on a three-story building, that's already done, so.
Why, that's what's going forward.
That's what's here right now, so anything we do tonight that changes that, means we have to go back through the whole process again.
We just have the property to again bring it back, right, that's what I was just playing.
An hour and a half to do it. Three years.
Well, it's not changing the, the, like, all the doing is just taking off that third floor, right, so it's. Alright, so again, I'm just looking for nods for where to continue as it is, and shakes the heads, that we're not, so. Shaking their heads is watching.
There's, there's a straw poll while people raise their hand, but we don't have a vote, we don't have a vote, it's not a voice vote. It's not on the record, but everybody in the room knows whether they're for two or three.
That will make my life easier, to try and count people shaking their heads, I've just never done this before, so.
Once, once we come back to your property, though, then wouldn't both options be there for full, because we didn't talk tonight either, because I got a report from the board and didn't know this was going on, so we could give whatever would be, so if it came out a property as two floors, then you'd be voting on that. There were three floors, that's what I don't understand, like, how, or it's going with the processes.
If still, full board decides to vote, then whatever came out of property and then re-vote, it's looking back to, like, right.
Alright, Mr. Thompson.
Brett, I'm still not entirely sure what's, what's happening. My understanding was this is merely an informational meeting, correct?
Correct.
So, there cannot, without why they know the meaning of that, for campaigning votes tonight, sending back property. I suppose if you wanted to, you could take some kind of informal straw vote, uh, as Mr. Carter said, it can't be par the record, right? Um, but that's, you, what, or, uh, what was, what wasn't noticed up for tonight.
Right.
You, you can't do that, you, you can't take a vote tonight, send it back as property.
Right, or it would just be, the property would pick it up, because it's not being sent back, it's just property would have it up there to, to, to speak about it, is that correct? Because we're not sending it anywhere.
We're actually taking no action, Kevin, at all?
No, no, I understand, but I'm, I'm trying to get back to, logistically, how you put that back on, on this.
Chairman.
Is that what you're talking about, without reference to anything that happens? Well, that, no, that, that's, not really happening, I, 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 I know, I, but I just want to make it clear.
But again, I can do my straw poll.
No, yeah, I can do stuff.
So, um, if you'd like to, straw poll, just start raising your hands, if you'd like to get to do with it, project, project desk is moving one of the three-story buildings, raise your hands.
Wait, which one is this?
Keep the way that.
Oh, keep the way that.
And, those who would not.
We're not calling for all.
You know, the comment keeps being brought up that we have four or five handful of new members, well, in two years, we're gonna have another handful of members. This could go on adding tonight, so.
Could other than the fact that it starts in May, so it won't, it won't be new, unsigned at the end. Alright.
Jesus.
One more straw poll, and if you're not raising your hand, is, is the vote, it continues as a three-story. And it's not about, I'm sorry, I didn't mean it's about.
It's not about.
It's not about a straw poll, where it is already a three-story building moving forward. This is the last time, this is the, this is the last time. If you'd like to continue on as a three-story building, please raise your hand.
This is a three-story?
Three-story. Alright, it looks like we are going to continue on as a three-story building. Alright, I like that, we're all gonna be behind this, and if we're very, very, not willing, we're gonna raise our hand. Glad for taking your time, but I want everybody to know, go on, have a good one.